It evening, the time is five thirty on Monday, August twenty sixth, and we are at our work session. And we will start tonight with an city update from Mr. Brian McCain.
Thank you, ma'am. First, I want to say that the City of Pueblo float in the parade, State Fair Parade Saturday took first in the civic community category. So thank you to all city employees that worked on that and helped put that together over the week and few of us wrote it and it was a good time. Pueblo Transit is providing shuttle rights to the State Fair from the City of Pueblo's Main Street Parking Lot to the fairgrounds. They run every fifteen to thirty minutes. The shuttle and parking are free. Monday through Thursday, the first bus starts at three P M. The last bus leaves the Prairie Gate at eleven. Friday through Sunday, the first bus is at eleven A M. And the last bus leaves Prairie Prairie Gate at eleven thirty. And then on Labor Day, the first bus will be eleven A M. And then leaves the fair at eleven P M. In the past week, the police department handled three thousand one hundred and thirty-nine calls for service. Four hundred and sixty-five of those were self-initiated calls. The impact team conducted fifty traffic stops and recovered four guns. The Real-Time Crime Center assisted patrol in identifying a suspect vehicle vehicle involved in a shooting on South Prairie. And after a short vehicle pursuit, took two persons into custody and recovered several more firearms. And then Monday, September second is pups in the pools. So from nine to eleven and then twelve to two at City Park Pool. Five dollars per dog and humans get in for free. And that concludes my update.
Councillor Maestri, I just wanted to add that tonight, City Council, you've received a non-departmental request. You have one-pagers inside the binder and then a jump drive with the full grant application attached to it. And then you'll also see a memo from my non-departmental coordinator, Melissa, and a one-pager which will describe the requested amount, request versus total budget, proposed funding amount, proposed activities. We also went back to twenty twenty-one to let you know the other non-departmental requests they received. If there's any C S A C approvals and any other city funding, if they got mayor or council contingency, there'll be some additional notes on every single page that will help to better understand the funding recommendation. There are a couple entities that still had outstanding audits that hadn't been turned into the city that we're waiting for. And those are also listed in the notes. On September thirtieth, we will come and give you a full presentation. So if there's any questions between now and then, or you would like any specific non-departmentals to come to council, if you can just let us know and we'll get that requested.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Anything else? Okay, um, next, anything from council? Okay, um, something that I wanted to bring up after last week's council work session is that work session is an opportunity for counselors to talk about anything they want to talk about. And so when I ask anything from council, that really is the appropriate time so that we could stay on task with the agenda. And for new counselors coming forward, coming into council this year, if you anytime that you openly want to talk about something that you'd want to bring forward, an issue that you're having or concern that you're having with anything that you're working on, a concern on a policy, procedures, anything of that nature, this is the time to do that. And then that way, when we're working through the agenda, we can stay on task with those, you know, those who are presenting. Any questions?
I have a question. So as an example, me meeting with constituents in my community or business owners in my community would be, this is the appropriate time.
Well, that or at public forum, if it's something that you've met with the people in your community and you want to talk about moving, say, a policy forward, it some sort of ordinance forward, this is the time that you could bring it up. If you think that you'd like a work session on it, we can schedule a work session for a deeper discussion. If there's something that you may want to ask, you know, what what's our, do we have a consensus or agreement to like, will you get support on what you're trying to do? This is now the time to bring it up. If it's a policy, you don't like a policy or a procedure, now's the time to bring it up. Because at some point, we will have to discuss it in front of in in a meeting. And so I'm just letting you know that this is the appropriate time. Okay?
So the fact that I met with property owners of of the shopping center in my district today, this is the appropriate time.
If you want to bring, do, if you want to implement something to address their concern. If you just want to talk about it openly, public forum is also another place.
It's probably a little bit of both.
Okay, why don't you go ahead with that?
Okay. I met with the owners of the Belmont Shopping Center today with the property manager and the owner out of Denver. It was a very interesting conversation. It's concerning to me because we're dealing with homeless situation there where a restaurant owned in that in that particular shopping center was broken into, not from the doors, but from the roof. They completely destroyed the H V A system and went in through the roof and robbed the place. Okay? In addition to that, the homeless situation is out of control up there. The the so we're going to work to 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 remedy that situation. But at the same time, they also are willing, they are also also are willing, the owner is to provide the City of Pueblo with a police substation in that particular shopping center and to retrofit it for the police department. And I think it's gotten to the point, folks in this city, where we we really need to move away from the downtown area and go into the four quadrants of the city as it relates to law enforcement. But these these individuals out of Denver are extremely willing and wanting to enhance this community and to bring it back to where people feel safe. And on top of that, where we can bring business into this community and 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 do those kinds of things. And this gentleman has those kind of capabilities. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Latino, does anyone on council have any comment for Mr. Latino in regards to his concern for police substations at this time? Okay, all right, Mr. Latino, thank you for letting us know and and just keep working with us and we'll work with you as far as seeing if it, if any of this is feasible.
Oh, thank you.
We always have to look at the financial aspects and if we can financially support that and also man it. That, you know, those are some of the concerns.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that being said, let's go ahead and move on to our first guest tonight, and that's Mr. Salvador Acuna and Denise with Co-create. And they're going to be speaking about broadband. Thank you. All right, thank you. Welcome. And you can go ahead and start, Mr. Acuna.
First off, thanks, thanks. You turn your mic on.
There we go. All righty. Well, thank you, Mayor Graham and City Council for the opportunity to come and provide a presentation. I know it's been a while since we first started, but there's been a lot of action and a lot of activity aside from the plan. One of the unique things about the work that we've been doing is the development of the plan, but at the same time, doing a lot of the implementation because of the dynamic environment that we're we're involved in. So a lot of the federal funding is right around the corner. There's the work closely with the state for the development of the broadband plan, the broadband plan for the state of Colorado, as well as the digital equity plan for the state of Colorado. So those were completed in this late spring of broadband plan, spring of twenty-four. And the digital equity plan was just completed two months ago. So the focus of our presentation and the plan is that we want to be able to provide robust, reliable, affordable internet access to every home in Pueblo for now into the future. Encourage the development of programs and resources to support broadband, digital equity, inclusion and literacy needs for the neighborhoods to thrive. So that's the overarching purpose of the work. The areas of the plan are the following. There's a section of provides the the background of the historically underserved community that 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 we're that we live in. We will talk about the Pueblo broadband ecosystem and the importance of taking an ecosystem approach to our work. The creation of the Pueblo Opportunity Project Alliance, which is a community coalition to address broadband and digital equity and inclusion needs. The design of a digital marketing framework to enable the work and promote the work that is going to be done and look at what broadband access means, you know, for the community of Pueblo. Talk about the assessment, evaluation, tracking and reporting. The section on strategies for sustainability, there's fifteen overarching strategies. And then finally, we'll talk about some of the success that we've had, you know, during the implementation of the last two years. So this is the overarching logic model. I'm not going to spend too much time on it, but we decided that we would do a logic model because for most funders, this is the foundational piece that they'll require. So if you look on the left, those are all the inputs from federal, state, local and community-based organizations. We're going to design the development of Alliance, which will have a leadership team. We'll provide clarity of vision and we'll have a network of community partners. It's going to be a coalition that's going to drive the majority of our work forward. We completed the the community broadband assessment, and that's included in the plan. We'll provide some information on that. And then we're going to look at public-private strategies, what they mean, the options that are available, recommendations in the area of broadband access. And then we're going to look at some of the specifics on the programmatic piece that the alliance will be moving forward with the overarching long-term outcomes of being the purpose that we identified. So that's the overarching logic model of of the work. Next slide. We looked at an ecosystem approach, which basically is clarifying all things broadband and digital equity from the federal, state level and local and community level with N T I A funding with the Broadband Equity Access and Employment Fund, which is going to be right around the corner with that funding. They really want an ecosystem approach, a community approach, to be able to provide the types of solutions necessary. The digital equity funding is along the same routes. They will be able, the state funds will only be funding coalitions. So that's the reason for the design of the alliance that would be positioned to be able to go after the funding and that funding should be available in the spring of twenty twenty-five. So go ahead, next slide. This is data that we provided when we first started. This is data that was completed in the spring of twenty twenty-two. Of course, it's two years have passed. At that time, we looked at the N T I A had pre-designed and pre-identified census tracts that were identified as underserved. There were thirty-four of those census tracts, thirty-six of the census tracts, and there was some duplication. It's thirty-four now that were identified in the City of Pueblo. Twenty-six percent of the residents have no internet connection at the time, seventeen point four are without a computer smartphone, computers, smartphone or tablet. We call the device. Poverty level at the time was twenty-four point four percent. Seventy-nine point nine two percent of the students in District Sixty were on free reduced lunch. And at that time, there was a report that was out, Pueblo had ranked, had been ranked eighty-second in the country as far as the worst connected communities in the United States. Okay. Things have changed, but that at that time, that was the data. This is a brief little map, and it's the real red areas are the underserved areas. The purple areas are still classified as understerved in this map, but not as much as the central heart of Pueblo, the Y-zone. Green is connectivity is pretty well, brown is pretty, is pretty, is pretty good. But as you can see, the heart of Pueblo was at that time very much not served or underserved. The components of the plan of the with the alliance, of the model of the coalition is this. Digital equity inclusion theory and what that means is going to drive it. We're going to have a digital literacy and devices strategy. We will look at digital navigation, a clear strategy in and around digital navigation, what that means, you know, to the City of Pueblo. We're going to look at strategic granting. As part of this, we we wrote grants on behalf of the city. We wrote four of them. We're going to be writing through two here within the next couple of months. So we're going to be very active in the resource development space, looking for resources for broadband and digital equity. Advocacy, the subsidies, as you know, the A C P program is no longer around. So we're looking at options for subsidies and what that could mean, you know, for those not served and some of those households that may not be able to be to be able to afford, you know, services for their internet. And then Denise is going to provide a comprehensive overview of the broadband access strategies and what they mean to Pueblo and what it means for Pueblo to be a leader in Southern Colorado. Next slide. The digital navigation system, one of the things that has received a lot of positive feedback in in some of the areas that we presented, we presented in in Philadelphia. And the fact that we were looking at a digital navigation strategy, community-wide, was very, very well received. We were asked to provide a presentation on what our activity is is in Pueblo. And the fact that we want to look at this strategy comprehensively is significant. Other communities are looking at maybe one or two navigators, you know, where we want to be able to create a solution that is community-wide. Okay? A digital literacy, there's a lot of activity in this. This is kind of a snapshot of what a curriculum would look like. We've worked with numerous organizations in the city with respect to the literacy piece. We went after two proposals. The literacy piece will be a central part of the proposal that we will be working on, which is due the twenty-third of September. That proposal will be part of the the alliance's work. And the fiscal agent is going to be the Public City County Library District. Because they have the infrastructure to be able to really move on this. They understand how to to manage and distribute devices. They provide literacy right now, and our strategy is to create a literacy network to bring in the partners necessary to be able to find services, English and Spanish, work with university, P C C, the learning source and others. So next slide, the device piece right here, there was some good activity on the development of the distribution center. That is, we still have to figure that one out. So this is going to be a strategy that will need a little bit more work on. There are organizations in Denver that we can partner with, but the activity that was happening here in Pueblo is is kind of slowed down. So this will be an area to to look at how we can create an environment of refurbishing used devices and be able to get those in in the hands of families and kids that, in many cases, cannot afford a device, whether it be a laptop and or a tablet. Okay, next. As far as the affordable connectivity plan, we wrote a proposal on behalf of the city, it was funded for three hundred thousand dollars. But just right after it was funded, the A C P program, there was the summaries of the fact that it was not going to be continued, and it was not continued. So the program was put on halt. But I believe that that once at the federal level, there there becomes available something to take its place, we would be ready to be able to move on this strategy. We were in the strategy, we're really looking at providing connectivity to seven thousand of the fourteen thousand households that at that point in time qualified for the Affordable Connectivity Plan. Next, next. Okay, Denise?
Okay, so when we talk about granting, we talk about granting it with a specific, with some specific thoughts in mind. We want to do, can't take his, can I? We want to do strategic granting that works and brings in a lot of collaborators and partnerships that maximizes our opportunity for funding. Most federal grants look for ways that you're partnering with others in your area. Or if we're looking at a private philanthropic organization, they also want to know that you're working not in isolation. So we look to match the requirements with our partners. We align what's going on and we we feel that this reduces the duplication and the kind of applying over the top of somebody else in in the area. And so we work with them so that we're all working together. And it also increases opportunities and incentives for the funding organizations because they feel like they're going to have a broader reach. So organizations in the city that we reached out to, a group of organizations called Pueblo's Futures Better Together. And we've been working with them specifically on a number of the digital equity and inclusion opportunities that are available right now. And we hope to see that happen. This is the grant that is due at the end of the month, at the end of September. And we think that that we are positioned fairly well because we have a large coalition that has been working together and they've all brought great opportunity. And they've also brought match. So one, one organization says, I have an extra room, I can donate. One organization says, I'll help with this. And so there's always a match requirement, and that's funding that we're not coming asking for. Because as we work together, we can do in-kind match requirements that we can reach by working together. So we think that's a real positive thing. Strategic granting right now, besides the digital equity grant, later on this fall, the B money will become available across the country. That's forty-two billion dollars in Colorado that'll, it translates to about seven hundred and eight hundred and twenty-four million dollars for broadband development in in the state of Colorado alone. And we will be applying for that to put an internet data exchange here in the city. It will be the first place outside of Denver to have a connection that is close and it has better, what's called latency. So it doesn't, it's not, there's not a wait time from when you push the button. Currently, if if one of you send an email to the person next to you, it would actually travel all the way back to Denver and then back down here. That's the way the internet is designed right now. Once we get funded for the internet data exchange, that will go here to a site that C S U Pueblo has donated and then back here. We will be the first place in Colorado to have that. And we will be a regional hub for the whole southern region then. We anticipate that application to be about fourteen million, fifteen million dollars in funding. It's not complete yet, so it may change a little. But we think it's pretty cool. In addition to that, we're looking at other opportunities and we're looking for other partners. So the idea is to work together and to move forward and to bring more resources to the city. And I'm going to just go through the rest of the slides here. No, I think I'm done. Oh, the advocacy. Yeah. So these are the organizations that we've worked with at the national level to help share our our story and help them understand what we want to do, get input and ideas from them. And by sharing our story with them, they share the story out and that helps us people to understand and helps us get funding. So we've worked very hard to make sure that lots of other people understand the the needs for Pueblo and the things that we think we're doing right.
Okay, as far as the alliance structure, the structure of the alliance is pretty, excuse me. As far as the alliance structure, the structure of the alliance is going to pretty much take on a a a formal natural organizational structure. Like I mentioned, library district is going to be the backbone. It's going to be the fiscal agent and how we're going to work. We will have committees that will drive the work and implement the plan from advocacy to digital navigation to literacy to broadband access, middle mile, the specifics of broadband. So it's structured that way. The that that is moving already. We are meeting Wednesday to formalize parts of that. Like Denise had mentioned, this is an expansion of Pueblo's Futures Better Together Navigation Committee, of which there were about nine members. Now, we looked at what it's going to look like. I believe there's going to be at least twenty-two organizations that are invited that will be a part of that at least. And so that that's happening as we speak. The marketing piece, which will be a part of this. One of the key things for the adoption of the internet is very important, especially when you're looking at working in not served and underserved communities is the fact that it's like poverty, you know, you don't. Some people, if you're, you live in poverty, in many cases, sometimes you don't know that you're in poverty. You don't know what you don't have, right? And so some of these communities and these households who don't have access, right? They may have, they may have a cell phone, but they may not have a connected, dedicated connection at their home. They may not have a laptop, desktop. So consequently, you know, the fact that we need to be able to communicate and market and message the value of the internet and what it means, you know, for for those underserved households. And this is kind of the framework of what we want to do. It's a pretty, it's a it's a strong digital marketing strategy. There's new softwares that are coming out that we're going to be integrating into it, some outstanding software. We're going to look at integrating artificial intelligence and some of the things that we're doing. So the fact that we'll be moving on this will be will be significant.
So we're going to, got this. I'm going to talk a little bit more about broadband access because that's one of the key tenants, digital equity and resources to help people once they have a connection and then broadband access, getting the connection. So there's a lot of pieces here. We want to build on the plan that exists in in Pueblo. The City of Pueblo does have fiber for city buildings only. And I don't think the city's really set up to take on subscribers and and do that kind of stuff that providers would do. So the city fiber is used by city stuff or city things. And we keep it that way for security, among other things. Okay? We also want those pro public-private options. We want a middle-mile connection. And if you think of this like you think of the way you get water in your household, you have a bigger pipe on the outside, and as it gets smaller, coming into your neighborhood and into your house, you only get what a half-inch or quarter-inch pipe. That's the same kind of thing with broadband. So middle mile is that bigger pipe like you have in a big water system. It takes that big pipe to get broadband to your home. And then last mile connectivity is from that big pipe to your home. We want competition, so the pricing stays affordable for everybody and everybody wants to work hard for for households subscriptions. And we think that Pueblo is positioned in a very nice spot to be a leadership in broadband in the community. So we've kind of talked about some of this in a little in a little bit more. The plan, how we're looking at mapping, F C C, the state, and we look at research and data. Here are projects that are currently underway in Pueblo right now. Here are projects that are currently underway in Pueblo right now. So Adelante Connect which is with CSU Pueblo, the FCC project, which we have had to put on hold at the request of the FCC. The NTIA Internet Data Exchange is the Avanzar Legacy Project. Now here's a couple that you may or may not have heard of before. Intrepid was awarded four million dollars to build that middle mile around, a ring around the city. So we now have that big pipe that's being constructed now. And T-Mobile, along with Intrepid, has pledged to do an eighty million dollar build for fiber to forty-two thousand households. It's coming. It's in some communities now and you're seeing, um you may have gotten a door hanger or a flyer or something. Um it's as they build out parts of the city, they will let you know that that service is available. Um it offers a, an option of services starting at forty dollars a month, which is pretty affordable. And that'll give you a fiber connection that's three hundred meg up and three hundred meg down. Or if you want the deluxe one, you can get two gig, which is two thousand meg of service. And that's much more money. Um and they should speak about that, not me. So um Comcast is doing the same thing. They have a pricing structure similar. They have a low pricing structure. They also have several layers. And they also provide additional services besides internet access. City fiber, again, that's city fiber, city funded for city use. And school district has school district fiber funded through the E-rate program at the federal level that the E-rate insists only be for school use. So those are the kinds of things that we see. Again, we feel that the public-private options, um looking at, at partnerships. Um the opportunities with Intrepid, for example, offer a um open access opportunity for other providers to come in and use the infrastructure that they have developed. And so that's a key piece for you for the future, for things to move forward. Middle mile we just talked about, last mile we talked about. And we believe that having two competitors that we just talked about along with a number of other competitors that have been in the market, um Hilltop um which used to be Rye Highline. It used to be Rye. Um and then um CCOM. There are four different viable competitors in your city and that's a good thing. You should be, you're very lucky. And so we've encouraged that and worked with all of them in different parts over the last couple of years. Um and this talks about broadband leadership and the opportunities that will come with the internet data exchange. And um I think you will, because of the data exchange, you'll see businesses interested in locating here cuz they'll have a good, robust, affordable um unreliable connection other than Denver.
Okay, this crazy slide is a, kind of is the strategy map. Uh those on top, uh there are seven specific strategies for broadband. Uh and the action plans are included in, in, in your plan. Uh there are six digital equity and inclusion strategies. Uh they're also included. And so this kinda um kinda depicts what they're doing. One of, one of of the things that is really unique is that in most cases, um broadband providers would go in and build. And they would offer their services and give you a price and, and either buy it or you don't, okay? Now that the digital equity funding is out and the fact that they realize that there needs to be more done in the underserved and not served communities. So what is happening now, we are working, we're working with other partners nationally, is they're looking at a comprehensive approach for communities. Deploying broadband, but at the same time deploying a digital equity strategy that will enable the adoption of the internet and provide the types of learning and skill building necessary to use it. So that is a key thing and that's what we're doing here. And actually, from here, the work that we've designed here, we're doing some work in other communities built off this comprehensive approach. Uh and, and digital equity inclusion and broadband access. Okay, the evaluation piece, we put a snapshot evaluation, which built off uh surveys, uh focus groups and key stakeholder kind of vision, one-on-one sessions. We built that in because one way or another, you're gonna need to be able to evaluate what you do, right? Uh to be able to put together an evaluation for the whole plan, it was hard to be able to clarify because it, we were working with the moving target. You know, there was the digital equity plan was happening as we were working here at the state. The broadband plan was being done and implemented. So it was just it was kind of a, it was crazy environment. It was really challenging, right? And so we wanted to make sure that we provided kind of a guide and a template to work with. So once those proposals came out, we can target, take what we have and make a more clearer and targeted and more robust evaluation. But we at least built in the foundation of what that could be. Okay. Some of the successes that we've had, I mean, it's interesting. We've, number one, we've been able to organize a network nationally. They know our, our work. They know what Pueblo's doing. You know, from Shelby to NDIA, the National Digital Inclusion Alliance, we were asked to speak at their conference. Uh the Institute for Self Reliance. So these are really, you know, great resources that are on the cutting edge and can provide those best practices for our communities throughout the country. And so we have a direct line to their research and the work that they do and the kinda advocacy that they're able to provide. Uh the state, we work closely with the Colorado Broadband Office since in the inception of the beginning of their planning, we work closely with the Office of the Future of Work and were directly involved in the design of their digital equity plan. As a matter of fact, they took from our plan to build theirs. We were, we were ahead of the curve with this. And so those are some of the things that happened. As far as regional planning, you know, we've worked with CSUP, we were able to get three million dollars of funding for the Adelante Connect project. We worked with Action Twenty-Two's uh broadband committee, helped, actually helped with the inception of that and which is a unique environment. I mean, where you have all the providers in the southern part of the state getting on the phone and talking about broadband to, actually weekly for a while. So it's been going on for about a year and a half now, which created a real strong advocacy group with the state to make sure that we were able to get the resources to southern Colorado. Okay, and it happened. And so that was a key thing. Uh and plus the work with Pueblo's Futures Better Together, Significant Network, as well as numerous other community-based organizations that are involved in digital equity and inclusion work. As far as uh actual more value, okay, we have the data. All right, that was one of the, probably the best thing we did is on the front end is really get a strong understanding of the community of Pueblo and the YSO and the underserved areas. What we're doing now, this data, like I say, is two years ago. We are working with the broadband toolkit and the digital equity toolkit out of San Francisco. And we will be able to provide a granular comprehensive understanding of what the federal government has identified as covered populations for digital equity and broadband. No one else will have that. And so we would like to come back and to be able to show before and and after, bring that data and be able to showcase that data here in the next couple of months. And we'll have, be able to use that data as far as our proposal for the digital equity competitive grant that's due on the twenty-third. Um the partnerships that we had with uh with the Colorado Broadband Office, Future Work, go ahead and change that. Yeah, it's, these are some of the things you can read. We're, it's just a, it's been an abundance of work. But we're in a really good position uh right now to be able to move this plan forward. Uh continue to move a floor, the forward. It's, it's already been moving and we just wanna make sure that we can continue the momentum and be able to go after the funding. That's right around the corner. Questions? Yeah. Yes, I am.
Okay, yes. Are you, are you complete?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yes. Um can you, Clyde, can you get back to the slide of uh projects and projects um in planning? Which one? Projects that are planned, that they're going, they're in planning?
Let me see if I can get there.
Um Mr. Gomez.
Yeah, um so as you know, I've known Sal a long time. And he I ran the CS program through Congressman's Office. It was called Sharing Electronic Equipment District and statewide. This program to me is so vitally critical, I can't begin to tell you. And not just because I know Sal, because I know what, if we have another COVID-type incident, this is so important to have, to get out there and do it now before something like that strike again, because we'll be behind the eight ball. I, I just do the simple things. I go to the library, I see people lined up waiting to get a chair to sit and use those computers there. And knowing that you have collaboration with the library makes me feel good. The, the, the chances of being able to utilize interns and some of these issues and providing credit for them if they learn these processes, this to me is, I don't know if it should be called just a Pueblo Opportunity Project, but maybe the Pueblo Essential Project. Because this is so critical. And I can't begin, I, you have my support a thousand percent. Thank you.
Anyone else in council have anything to say?
Um I have a couple of questions. Um so your, we funded you a hundred thousand dollars for you to come forward and with your consulting and so forth. Um do you have money to get you through the rest of the year? When, when do you think that you're?
No, well, actually, the, we, the, the funding for this project uh ended in February. Uh luckily, Adelante Connect was funded and implemented, so we're doing some work. You know, with getting that project off the ground. Uh we are doing work in other communities, but what we've done as, you know, number one is the contract. Number two, we're in it because we're in it. This is what we, we wanna make the impact, right? And so consequently, you know, the work of we had no control that the B funding was gonna, they're gonna change that funding date three, four times?
Uh they pushed it back
Pushed it back.
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months. So what, if you remember, we came here, the funding was announced to be kind of right around the corner. They pushed it back, pushed it back, and pushed it back. And they did it with the digital equity plan. But at the same time, it allowed us to do, implement some of the things that we were doing. And we you know, lo and behold, we're in a really good position because we were able to implement the plan that we were developing. And so that was good. Going forward, you know, if we were to ask for funding, one of the key things to fund would be to fund the coordination of the alliance, right? Because it's gonna be a community-wide coalition that is gonna drive this work. And there's gonna be significant resources for digital equity. We have a significant underserved population that really uh have some challenges in utilizing in the, the internet. You know, we, we, I don't have to talk about the poverty and some of the things that our community faces. So if you align poverty with dip broadband access and the ability to use it, I mean, it's, there's a direct correlation of, of a significant barrier there. And so we are in a good position to be able to go after that funding because we have data, right? So if there was one thing to go forward, I would say, you know, fund the alliance, fund a coordinator, fund a coordinator to be able to do this, you know, we're
Applications for B.
And applications for
So we can get the
Yeah.
For sure, we can have the resources to get to the internet data exchange.
Yeah, that's
That's, that'll, that would be
So your internet data exchange would be, um you would have um data on all of these projects that take place? Is that
Internet data exchange is the piece um that is the second is the first place outside of Denver for all dated traffic for internet access to come. And that's um, it was originally planned for Colorado Springs. Um we advocated quite quite hard that Pueblo was a better um spot for it, both um because of its distance from the front, from Denver and also because of its location and its leadership on the south, southern part of the state. And um the group that works with the internet data exchange centers across the country agreed with us after we laid the data out that we'd been collecting.
And so your broadband Aurora is, Aurora is the only one that you guys brought to the table, but that's not currently active.
That
That's the one that was, so when we talk strategic granting most of these other grants, the city isn't an eligible applicant as a lead. So we do partnerships in order to improve the opportunities for everyone involved. So for the Adalante Connect, the only organization that could apply for that was a Hispanic-serving institution of higher ed. And the city partnered with and will have a location um at one of its facilities. And so the city is a part of that. And all of the grants that we've talked about are part and, and supportive of the city. But you don't have to be the lead applicant for each of those. As a matter of fact, you'll probably get further if you work together with uh groups of people, which is what we've found.
So I noticed that Comcast is bringing their own upgrade into the community. And they offer services for um underserved um income, you know, income-qualified, reduced services and so forth. I don't know about T-Mobile, but what is it that you would be doing differently than what they're doing? Cuz they're providing their own infrastructure with their own funding. And they're providing um low-cost services. What is it that you guys would be doing different than them?
Okay, okay, for, okay, for example, um, um what Comcast is doing is they're doing good things. What they don't do, if you, if, if you look at uh the hotspots and the things that they fund, uh that's fine. But getting a hotspot is like, you know, putting a Band-Aid on a hemorrhage. It's minimal service. We're talking about a fiber-to-the-home solution and being able to go get money to help subsidize that solution. With the prod, with the proposal that we'll be submitting on the twenty-third. Strategy is not done, but it's close. We're looking at subsidizing a thousand homes. Because there's no more subsidy now. There's no ACP program. So we're looking at doing a community navigation piece where we'll take
So who's the facilitator and administrator of those funds?
What's that?
Who's the administrator?
Administrator of that fund, of those, that fund is proposal will be the city, county, library, district.
They'll be the lead app
They'll be the lead applicant.
And they'll work in partnership with um, I don't think we have a total number, but a number of other organizations who've all come together to share their expertise and resources.
Yeah.
And the difference, um both Comcast and T-Mobile have a digital equity set of offerings that they offer and they offer it and they do a good job, but they don't cover all of the different components like how do you connect to get, to get um if you need to sign up for the SNAP program? How do you sign up to vote? How do you sign up for um all the different things that are, that are agnostic, not just to promote signing up for the program? So pretty much if you look at any service providers, digital equity components, they're looking to get people to sign up for access only. But that's only a part of what you do. When we teach kids to read, if we just teach them the letters of the alphabet and they can sound out words, that doesn't mean they understand what they're reading. And that's the same kind of app thing we have to do with people that have never used the internet before. We have to help them understand how to get from point A to point B.
So the funds that they would be receiving wouldn't necessarily be to subsidize their services from, say Comcast or T-Mobile?
It would be agnostic. It could be either one.
Oh, it can't, it could be.
Yeah.
Then we're not
And so are we even set, is our library district set up to cut checks for? Cause they'd be cutting checks to those providers. They would have to subsidize, if they're subsidizing people, they would have to, they would somehow have to, um, pay the providers, uh, for, so to subsidize those people's services. Are we even?
Yeah, like, like, for example.
I mean, that gets into like a financial.
Yeah, like, for example.
We don't, we don't, the library doesn't do that now, and I don't believe they would do that. But what they do do is they allow a lending program for a laptop that is set up for that connectivity.
Oh, so it wouldn't be to subsidize the cost of their services, it would be for equipment?
They actually do that now.
Okay.
Yeah.
They actually do that with hotspots, with tablets and with.
And if they do that now, aren't they getting their own grant funding for those?
Very not enough. They, the demand far outweighs what's available. All right.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions from council? You asked council?
Uh, just simply looking at just for me and reference to program development. And I look at, you know, people say, well, maybe, you know, folks, everybody has a cellphone. But if you ever realized working on a cellphone as opposed to working to a tablet, as opposed to working to a minimum of eleven-inch screen, it's just incredibly so much more progressive if you get away from a cellphone, first of all. And not everybody has a cellphone. But for me, this program is so essential, it, it really is. And if we're gonna achieve the digital equity and inclusion that you're talking about, I wish this would have been done a long time ago, and maybe we could set the model for the rest of the country, is that possibility if we do this right?
Yep.
There's a couple that are ahead of us, but we could beat them.
Yep.
It's exciting, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Councilor Maestri, I have a couple.
Okay, Councilor Martinez?
Yeah, thanks. I, you know, to your point, Councilor Maestri, I guess I'm confused as well because if I remember correctly, a couple of years when we, ago, when we approved the contract, I thought it was for Co-create to write grants as the subject matter experts on behalf of the city so that the city is the fiscal agent, so that the city does receive the funds. And I, I guess I'm confused to hear that that's not necessarily the case anymore.
Yeah, no, the, 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 uh, the contract was to, uh, write three to four proposals, I believe it was four, we did that, and the strategic granting approach, uh, is with respect to moving forward in that way, you need to write for the proposals that best fits the right fiscal agent. The city, in some cases, is just not the right fiscal agent. For example, we're looking at a, if you look at, at the Internet Exchange Point, the, the, the lead on that, in most cases, it needed to be a, I, it had to be an internet service provider, right? But you need to have a public-private partnership to make it work, right? So we had the city, we had the, the, the internet service provider. We brought Connected Nation in, who brought in the IXP, and we had CSU Pueblo and the CSU System to donate the land to house the Internet Exchange Point at CSU Pueblo, right? That was not, we can't say, we want, you gotta come to the city and do it. They specifically wanted to be housed at a higher, at an institution of higher learning because of the amount of traffic that universities have. And they want it because it's about learning, right? Whether it's business learning, community-based learning, or formal institutional learning, and that was the request of that entity. So that's where you needed to go. I mean, on behalf of the city, yeah, we would be fine, but at the same time, the funding that we're looking at really, it didn't work, it worked for the speed, for the, for, for, for the Pueblo Order Project, for the, the three hundred thousand dollars, yes, it did work there, and we did get funded, but the ACP program, um, is no more. So it's like, well, you know, you gotta do it. Our approach was to be able to do these number of proposals that would impact the community, right? So what does that mean? It means to impact the community, and that's what we did.
And what were the four, you just said that you wrote four proposals under the ARPA contract, what were those four grants that you wrote?
Yeah.
We wrote the proposal with, um, for connected minority communities with, uh, the city, with CSU Pueblo. We wrote the, uh, proposal for, uh, digital navigators to sign people up for broadband access with FCC. And the, um, lead on that was the city. We did write an proposal, or we prepared all of the work for the Colorado State Digital Equity Part One for AmeriCorps, uh, and that was the city as the lead applicant, and that was not able to be completed. Um, the city, uh, wasn't able to, to complete that application. Then we wrote a second, uh, Colorado State Digital Equity AmeriCorps application with the second round of funding, and that we moved the fiscal agent to, um, the Pueblo Library District, uh, that was not funded, all the applications for the AmeriCorps funding stayed in Denver, and so there were no, there were no applications funded in any other part of the state. We did apply for capital project funds, um, for the Internet Data Exchange. Um, that was not funded under Capital Projects, the Colorado Broadband Office has asked us to resubmit under the B program. We, so, oh, and, um, while we weren't a part of it to any extent at all, um, Intrepid did write a middle-mile grant for four million dollars to build the ring around the city. So, um, there are six different grants that have been, um, in process. Um, and there are three more that we see happening over the next year or so.
One of, one of the key things even, probably even more important than this, for example, uh, a year and a half ago, when the state uh, began to categorize regions in the city as opposed to tier one, tier two, or tier three. Tier one being the most underserved, and you would be able to, you would only have to pay a twenty-five percent match if you're a tier-one community, right? Tier two, fifty percent match, tier three, you're done. So, all right, so when that happened, we, Pueblo came out as a tier-two community with our data, all right? So we worked with the Action Twenty-Two Broadband Committee and all the providers, and we said, no, 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 ain't gonna happen. We went to the director of this Colorado Broadband Office and said, no. We showed them all the data, advocated, we were changed because of that, from a tier two to a tier-one community, which was significant. Now we only have twenty-five percent match for all the broadband infrastructure funding that we go forward with, right? So there's much more to it than, you know, sit back and, and, and doing, writing the grants. We did that, we know that's part of it, but the strategic approach to what we did is what we needed to do to be able to bring the value that we needed to Pueblo, okay?
All right, well, we're gonna have to move on this evening because we have another guest, um, and they have, um, the net, the last part of the meeting. Um, if any counselor thinks that we need to discuss this any further, we can always, uh, ask to have you back.
Yeah. Just one quick, you know, I think I, I mentioned a bit, we'd like to come back to be able to showcase the new data, which I think is really, uh, really important for, for council and the mayor and all of you to, to see what, what the cutting-edge data shows. And we could be able to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next we have, um, conflict-free case management services with, uh, Ms. Stephanie Garcia and Colleen Batchelder and Nancy V. Hill from the, um, Stephanie is with the ARC and Colleen and Nancy are with the Resource Exchange. Welcome, ladies.
Thank you.
So let us know how the PowerPoint works. Who controls that? We do, okay. Can I get a five-second IT assist? Right there? That button there, okay. So, good evening, I'm Stephanie Garcia, I'm the Executive Director, uh, with the ARC here in Pueblo.
And I'm Colleen Bachelor, I'm the CEO with the Resource Exchange.
And I'm, I'm Nancy V. Hill, I'm the Director of Navigation and Quality at the Resource Exchange.
So the Resource Exchange is a nonprofit that serves individuals of all ages with disabilities, many of whom require long-term supports and services across their lifespan. Um, we are an organization that was created sixty years ago by families when Colorado was moving its system of services for people with disabilities, particularly people with intellectual and developmental disabilities from institutions into their home communities, really hoping to establish, um, community placements for these people. Um, and so we were set up as a, a community-centered board, uh, in nineteen sixty-four um, to support those community services for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Then in two thousand and nineteen, we also assumed responsibility for what's called single-entry-point services, which broadened it for people with a variety of other disabilities beyond intellectual and developmental disabilities. And then in this past year, we have been named now the Case Management Agency in Colorado's complex system. Um, and we're no longer just a, a community-centered board or a single-entry-point agency, but we're now the Case Management Agency. And we support, um, Pueblo County, El Paso County, Teller County, and Park County. Um, and we're supporting about, uh, thirteen thousand individuals across those counties, um, with a variety of, of disabilities.
Actually, the Resource Exchange came to Pueblo probably about eight years ago when I approached them to, um, consider offering case management services in Pueblo along with Colorado Blue Sky at that time. And over those eight years, approximately forty percent of the people that were enrolled in developmental disability waivers moved towards the Resource Exchange, so they're certainly not new to our community. So, um, the ARC is a local chapter of the ARC of the United States. We were established in nineteen fifty-seven in Pueblo. We became part of, uh, we, families kind of dovetailed on the civil rights movement at the time because really the only choices families were giving for their children were institutions. And so the ARC became a movement in trying to develop community-based service systems for their children, passing laws to allow children to go to public schools. We are the, net, one of the la, uh, largest, um, organizations in the country that serves people with developmental disabilities. And some of the specific services that we do, um, include what we call community assists, um, which are just basically people calling and they need to get connected, and they're not quite sure who to call, where to go to. Um, so we do a lot of, uh, help with vocational rehab. Um, it could be, um, housing issues, it could be getting into waiver services, getting financial eligibility, things that we would then pass on to the Resource Exchange. We do a, a lot of special education advocacy in our schools. We attended over three hundred, um, individual staffings last year for students on IEPs and what's called a five-oh-four plan, making sure that they're getting the necessary services and supports they need in the schools. The ARC of Pueblo also has a large guardianship program that was started in the seventies when people were coming out of the institutions and no lo, had no longer had involved family. Um, and so right now, we have, uh, we serve as legal guardians for seventy-four, uh, adults with individual, uh, intellectual and developmental disabilities that, um, don't have family members that can provide that service or appropriate family members to provide that service. We get a lot of referrals from Adult Protection, um, the Police Department, um, so we, we, we get a lot of referrals from several agencies. And we do public policy advocacy as well, making sure that laws and, and local policies at the local, state, uh, and national level with the ARC of the United States, um, we're passing policies that support people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Try to speak into this microphone. Move left a little bit. Um, so when Stephanie talks about services, long-term care services and supports that, uh, we provide, their home and community-based services, um, we, and as Colleen said, we, we serve birth to death. So we have children's waivers, there's four of them in the state of Colorado. Um, we have the children's extensive support waiver, the children's life-limiting illness waiver. We have, um, the children's home and community-based waiver, and we also have, um, the children's HCBS waiver. And so each of those waivers have different targeting criteria, certain level of care assessments. But once a child qualifies, we help find services and supports so that they can stay in their, the family home. Um, we also have and administer six adult waivers throughout the state of Colorado. Some of those are non-IDD waivers, so, uh, what we refer to as, uh, single-entry-point waivers. Um, and those waivers are really designed to help people with other disabilities. Like, we have, it's called the elderly, blind, and disabled waiver. That waiver is specific to keep, um, our, our elderly population in their homes without having to go to a nursing facility. And we also have, um, developmental disability waivers. So those waivers, um, additional targeting criteria, but the end goal for each and every waiver is to keep those individuals in their home. We, we use this slide as an example of how confusing this system can be for families. And so the Resource Exchange, as well as the ARC of Pueblo, when we get those initial calls, it's a lot of handholding to walk people through these various systems to see, um, what they do qualify for. And the whole intent about the going to no wrong door is instead of being turned away for all of the various, it, no, you need to go here, you need to go here. You can walk into the Resource Exchange and they can connect you with any waiver that you do, that you are qualified for.
So prior to Colorado's case management redesign efforts, um, there were two organizations providing the community-centered board and single-entry-point services in Pueblo. Um, Colorado Blue Sky was providing those services, those case management services, as well as direct services for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And the Pueblo County Department of Human Service was doing, um, that case management support, support for people, um, accessing the single-entry-point services. So all of those other disabilities and services. Case management redesign, as Stephanie was saying, was really focused on integrating those so a, a, a person and their family could come in one door and figure out which one of those waivers might be the best to meet their needs, and they consolidated those then as a case management agency. So they were trying to create a no-wrong-door, but what they were also doing was working to comply with the federal, um, Centers for Medicare and Medicaid's requirement that the person or organization providing case management services does not also deliver the actual services to the person because there is believed to be a potential for a conflict of interest, that you would be deciding on which services and then delivering those services which you get paid to do. Um, and so they wanted, um, that to be separated. Um, the Resource Exchange was the only case management agency in the state that has never provided those direct services. We've always only been a case management agency, therefore, we didn't have that conflict of interest issue for us. Colorado Blue Sky had to make its decision and did decide to go to deliver those direct services and not deliver the case management services.
And conflict-free case management is something that advocacy organizations have been, um, pushing for. Uh, we've had the same system for fifty years, um, the community center board system, and most community center boards, uh, with. And most community center boards, with the exception of El Paso County, did both, as Colleen said. But it was through the help of the federal government passing laws that removed, that demanded states go to conflict-free. We were finally able to get that to happen in Colorado.
So fast forward to today, we're, we're talking about the perfect stormer. Maybe you can refer to it as the imperfect storm because all these things converged at once, which caused a dis, a total disruption to the services, to services statewide. You probably all heard about that, but we've, we have, we're working in a depleted workforce. Most of our care workers or personal care workers, they're paid very little or minimum wage. And it's very hard to employ someone to care for your, your elder parent or your sick child with, with minimum wage. And really to make sure that they get the, the advanced care that they need. These are long-term services and supports, meaning this person or individual who qualifies needs lifelong support, really that's what it equates to. So we have a depleted workforce. We had what, the public health emergency, the COVID. And so during COVID, the state of Colorado decided that anyone who was on Medicaid would be forced past, meaning they wouldn't have to submit financial verifications. They wouldn't have to fill out applications, they wouldn't have to jump through those loopholes anymore. So fast forward to today, they unwound that. And meaning people had to reapply, resubmit financial verifications in order to qualify. Well, people, the public got used to not doing that anymore. And so they were essentially ignoring any notices they got because, you know, it's 2024 and, you know, you don't know who's legitimate, who's not. And when you're asking for financial documents and they can't be redacted and we need your, we need your trust information. A lot of people were very resistive to that, which caused even a bigger disruption to services because now they don't qualify anymore for Medicaid or for long-term care Medicaid. The case management redesign, everyone had to separate, decide which, do you want to be a case manager? Do you want to be a provider? Well, that caused restructure throughout the state of Colorado. And so it was really assuming other entities and really learning the system. If you were a SEP provider or a single entry point provider, you didn't necessarily know the community or the CCB site or vice versa. So these case management agencies had to learn both sides of the world at once. We were fortunate enough that we assumed, really being a case management agency back in 2019. So we know, we knew both worlds, the CCB world and the SEP world. There was that, and then it caused delays in enrollments because to, in order to qualify for long-term care Medicaid, it is, it is a really long process. And the Resource Exchange individuals do that because the system is so complex. If I were to give any of you a Medicaid application and tell you here, fill it out, and this is what you got to submit, you, you would be confused, like it causes us confusion and we do it every single day of our lives, pretty much so. Then came the new Care and Case Management System. That's a statewide system that was implemented with many bugs. We're trying to work through those, but essentially what that causes is for our providers not to get paid. And if we can't create what's called a PAR, nobody gets paid, including the Resource Exchange. But what that really equates to is the members who desperately need these services have to go without because their providers aren't getting paid. This then also caused a significant workload for all of the case management agencies. What used to take us maybe two hours to do, we're lucky if we can get one service plan to go through in a day. It, it's very complex, then it's causing stress, burnout. Our members are very, rightfully so, they're scared to death because this is their lifeline. A lot of our waiver recipients, for example, in the elderly, blind, and disabled waiver, they really need that support, they need a personal care worker to come in and help them bathe, dress, maybe clean their house, do laundry, transportation, we have non-medical transportation or non-emergency medical transportation. Well, now it's very difficult because if the provider doesn't get paid, then they won't take them to the grocery store to go get groceries or to go get their prescriptions or, you know, and it's like the imperfect storm, everything coming together at once. And really, it's, it's impacting our members the most.
So as she said, this was happening statewide. And so people were getting kicked off Medicaid and not really even knowing that until they went and got a prescription filled. And we're being told by the pharmacy, you're not on Medicaid anymore. And so the 15 chapters of the ARC, ARCs in Colorado, along with the community center boards and case management systems, we did ask healthcare policy and finance and the governor's office to suspend all terminations and go back to the COVID, just let people, you know, let's, let's slow this train down. Let's get people their services back, and they agreed to do that. So we're, we were bombarded, they were bombarded with families coming in, asking for help with the applications. We were hand carrying them in because they were getting lost on the state's website. It, it's a real mess, so. But hopefully, we're meeting weekly with the state along with the case management agencies and slowly trying to get all the bugs out of the new software system.
Quite positive, given what you've just heard. We are making great strides in our staffing. We still have vacant positions, but we have made great advancements in that area. We are also in the middle of hiring a large number of temporary staff to help with all of the backlog of activities that have been created through all of these system challenges. And we have sought and been awarded almost a million dollars in ARPA funds to help with building new systems that are automated, that members and their family members can access and see where they are in the process, providers can get in, see in real time when their authorizations for billing happen. And so we see a brighter future, but we are working through a great deal of struggles as we are working through these system challenges.
Any questions?
Any questions, Counselor Flores?
You know, you deal with the most vulnerable individuals. And, and I know you also deal with infants, so you're dealing with infants all the way until death, really. And there, you know, as a city council, those individuals are, they're our constituents. We represent them too. Is there anything that a city government, like the city of Pueblo, could do, you know, or do more to help these individuals or to help the agencies like yourselves in, in some fashion? I, I don't know what that is, but is there anything? And I know you guys do a good job, I mean, you, you're the professionals in that area. And these individuals are so vulnerable that somebody watching out for their interests and also looking at their environment and everything that goes with that. You know, you're, you're doing God's work, I think. And my question then goes back to whether or not a city government, whether, is there something that we can do? Is there something that we create that gets in your way that might cause more bureaucracy?
I can speak to the relationships that you have with nonprofits in Pueblo, particularly around the unhoused. We had an intake last week of a young man that we became guardian for that was living in deplorable conditions. APS stepped in, we agreed to become successor guardian, we have him in a staffed home now. We bought him beds, bedding, clothing, he's, within a two-week time period, he's thriving. And, and so there are so many individuals that have a mental health diagnosis, that have a developmental disability, that would qualify for these waiver services. And so as the city continues to work, and I'm hopeful that the school district will come and meet with you, a lot of our special education staffings are with unhoused families that need extra assistance because they don't have a car, they can't get, if it's a site-based program on the other side of town, they can't get their child there. And so we need to go in and ask for related services around transportation for that child to get the needed special education services that they are entitled to. And, and so, you know, I, I know how much work that you do with nonprofits and it's money well invested. We collaborate with a lot of other agencies, both the Resource Exchange and the ARC of Pueblo, but I think that's one of the most important things that you do is that collaboration.
Thank you.
Hi, Counselor Gomez.
Yeah, as the father of a special needs, he's 42 years old, why am I getting old? We've utilized a lot of the services, I sat on the public diversified board, it launched me into a career in mental health work, a second tech for a long time, so I'm very familiar with this. So, so far tonight, two, two for two. But I'm concerned about things like that people don't understand about the system. Have you ever had issues where something as simple as a code can be confused? And if you do send that for payment, that you could end up in an awful lot of trouble at the federal government level? Has that ever occurred? Has that ever happened to you guys? Because when you try to do codes, CPT codes in particular, and you submit it and you submit it wrong, we've had cases where fines of $200,000 were not unusual. Have you ever run into any of that?
The worst situation I ever had was in 1995 and you were a real champion when you were with Scott McGinnis's office. And it was a mess because it was overbilling for a million dollars that was overspent.
Wow.
And you were able to help with getting the Attorney General involved and people did not lose their services.
Sweet, I have a witness, I'm not full of crap, I'm telling you.
Yeah.
I've been around these areas and he's, and I think Dennis hit right on, right on the head. You guys are doing God's work and thank you guys so much.
And my baby's body too, as well.
Counselor Latino.
Yes, you talked about the IEP, Individual Education Program. My, my concern are young people, okay? Obviously, that's my background. Individual Education Program, tell me how you engage with the schools, in particular, the public and or the private schools as relates to the young people that are IEP-based?
So that would be us. We get a call from the parent or the guardian that there's a problem. We also get calls from the schools that there's a problem and they want to engage an advocate to come in. My staff are trained as facilitators. They go in and try to find common ground, we do an intake with the family, we bring them in, we look at their current IEP. Or in a lot of situations, they've been asking for testing for an IEP and have been turned away. And so we help them put it in writing, we give the school district 45-day notice, you have to get this testing done, we need a meeting. And then we look at the testing results, sometimes we have to get an outside evaluation done if we want to challenge the district's evaluation. So it's a whole process of just getting somebody in. With the babies zero through three, it's an IFFSP, a family support plan. And then they transition into Part B of what's called the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And then there are certain rights that a student has with, that qualify for those protections.
So, so let's talk about the schools. Because I understand basically, having done this myself and having a background in that, that, that the social worker, the psychologist, the special needs teacher, whoever it might be, and the parents are all involved. So you're working with them as well?
They're all part of the interdisciplinary team, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, is that all for this evening?
Thanks again for asking us to come.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it. I, I have been hearing this throughout the community of people's services being cut off. And now it's, I, thanks for bringing it to my attention as to why. I appreciate it. Okay, thank you, ladies. And I guess we will be adjourning until 7:05 and when we'll start our regular council meeting. Meeting is adjourned at 6:55.